Okay, everybody, we're going to get started. Councilmember Knight, just need to turn back on your video and Councilmember Melton also video. Okay, Mayor, let's, I think we're all ready to go when you are ready.
Councilmember Knight. Okay, well, we're going to begin this meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your patience, and we apologize, we had audio difficulties related to Raleigh Television Network, but we are ready to go now. I know there are a number of people waiting to speak as we continue this evening, so again, I just want to say thank you for your patience as we work through this issue. So first, we have public comment. I would remind everybody to please remember the rules of decorum. Be kind. Don't interrupt. Don't say mean things to people. Be compassionate. Let's go. Okay. We start with Paul Skip Stam. Would like to speak about the statues and parts.
Actually, I think I have lost Stam. I do not see him on here anymore. We may have lost him. So I will give him a call, but your next person is in ready.
Elizabeth Doran.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, Elizabeth, we can. Is Don Stroud, he is with you. Is he joining you or are you representing the two of you?
I'm happy to represent the two of us. He may want just 30 seconds to say good evening to you.
Okay, thank you.
Shall I begin?
Yes, please, and you're going to be timed, Elizabeth. You have three minutes, and you can see the three-minute clock up there. So when that comes down to the last second, you'll be, you'll be told your time is up.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll begin. Good evening, I am Elizabeth Doran, the CEO of North Carolina Theater. We send you well wishes and thanks for your leadership. For 35 years, we have been Raleigh's professional producing theater at Raleigh Memorial Auditorium in the Duke Energy Center for the Performing Arts. Our history began when Raleigh's city manager asked us to mount a Broadway show to help revitalize downtown. We've been working with our city to produce Broadway in your backyard ever since. We have loved helping revitalize the city, but right now, we need the city's help. As you know, Broadway went dark on March 13th, and our stage went dark as well. You may have seen our shows downtown or have taken in a Broadway tour in Durham. Unlike the shows at DPAC, we are a nonprofit, fully invested in Raleigh. We don't have New York backing, but rather reinvest dollars into our locally-produced shows. We are an economic engine. We collect and spend millions of dollars locally each year, generating city revenues and employing more than 100 people on every production. About a dozen come from out of town, the rest are local performers, musicians, stagehands, carpenters, and costumers. At the moment, our costumers have joined with others to make 5,000 masks for the community, working in our costume shop and in shops throughout the Triangle. We're also a teaching theater. Our young students are recording show tunes, which we are sending individually to over 100 isolated Raleigh seniors as part of a project we call Quarantunes. We're artists, which means we're doing our art even when our stage is dark. We appreciate the support for this art that we have received from the city over the life of our company. Since our first show in 1985, the city of Raleigh has been in the unique position of being, among other things, our landlord. The Duke Energy Center is our home. We have a request for city council tonight. We look forward to returning to the Duke Energy Center as soon as it is safe to do so. When we do, we ask that you work with us to bring the healing power of live performance to our community safely, efficiently, and effectively. As our landlord, you are uniquely positioned to help with a noncash solution. We are asking for rent relief for a time as we recover. This can help us rebound and then once again help revitalize Raleigh economically and culturally. We are so proud to be part of this vital arts community, one that is shining brightly and providing hope in new ways. Soon, we will have the great honor to help lead the reuniting of our community. You face tough decisions as leaders and great staff. Know that we stand with all of you. Thank you for your support and consideration of the ways that we can work together to help our city and for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. We look forward to another 35 years and more of producing Broadway in your Raleigh backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Don, are you on there? Don Stroud?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Would you like to add anything?
Yes, just briefly, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I know you guys are in a really difficult position. I mean, obviously, with businesses closed down, sales tax revenues down, it's probably the toughest budget that you guys have seen in the city of Raleigh in Lord knows when. So I thank you for your leadership. All of us are looking ways for ways to be creative and try to survive through this entire situation and come out stronger on the back end. We really believe that the rent abatement is an outside-of-the-box way of allowing North Carolina Theater to continue to drive economic growth through the cultural arts in Raleigh and Wake County. So I just really want to implore you to take, take this into serious consideration. I understand the difficult decisions you're going to have to make over the, over the next month or so, and appreciate the position you're in. Thank you again for your consideration, your cooperation, and your leadership. Thank you all.
Thank you, Don. I'm going to ask the city manager if he could address this as a budget note. And I'm also going to ask city council just to think about this. We are going to face very difficult budget decisions. We're going to have to make some decisions about what we cut, what we don't cut. This is bigger than also North Carolina Theater. It also affects the ballet. It affects the symphony. It affects the bell ringers. It affects every group that performs in Memorial Auditorium. But this, this is going to require some discussion. So I would ask that the city manager bring this before us as a budget note as we start those difficult discussions. Okay, Robyn?
Certainly. And as a reminder, we provide all the budget notes to the council at your first budget work session in June, so that's only, that's only a few weeks away. And I know it seems like a long way away, but a few weeks away, and we would be happy to write up a budget note about the financial impacts. And I would encourage us to think about the scope of that within the context of the other groups that use the facility, acknowledging the great work of the North Carolina Theater and all those other groups. So it is, you do need the context, but we will be happy to bring that back as a part of the budget deliberations.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Richard Johnson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Richard Johnson, 3225 Oak Grove Circle. You recently voted to spend $100,000 to help people living in hotels. That was a good thing. But then this afternoon, you voted to spend $72,000, $72,000 on a consultant to help you come up with a replacement for CACs. And we will be left with no CACs and no viable alternative for a year or longer. You may say your listening sessions count, but they attracted few people, and there was no increased evidence of diversity among the attendees. How can you possibly justify spending $72,000 at this time of reduced revenue and increased need to fix something that wasn't even broken? What about CACs? Has you so scared? What was the emergency to destroy them? Why did you conspire in secret with no public input? Who told you this was a good idea? During the last campaign, I attended dozens of campaign forums, debates, and meetings. Never, never did I hear a single one of you say that CACs were a problem. Never, never did I hear any of you say that destroying CACs was part of your platform. CACs gave average people a chance to participate and be informed. You need to get over your irrational fear of CACs and the Raleigh residents they represent. You're now known as the Council of No. No citizen engagement. So Nicole Stewart, Mary Ann Baldwin, Patrick Bufkin, Jonathan Melton, Sage Martin, and David Knight, who are you listening to? Well, actually, we know who you're listening to. You're listening to John Kane, the Holt Brothers, Money Downtown Interest, developers, and the other special interest groups that bankrupt your campaigns and have no interest in public input. Also, Mayor Baldwin, you said it's important to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, extra money, on fancy designer bus shelters to brand Raleigh as a cool place. This despite more pressing needs, especially because of the impact of COVID-19. Do you really think fancy branded bus shelters are going to encourage people to ride the bus in this new era of social distancing? The only branding of Raleigh I've seen recently is national and international media coverage of Raleigh's mayor's vape pen and the heavily armed white militiamen illegally protesting downtown with military-style assault rifles, pistols, and knives, illegally protesting with no consequences whatsoever. Contrast that with Raleigh's treatment of young men of color armed only with vape pens. Good night.
Next, we have Wanda Hunter. Wanda had changed from speaking to the CARES Act funding amendment to this part. Wanda, are you available?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. And you have three minutes, and you can see the clock on there.
Okay. My name is Wanda Hunter. I reside at 112 Maple Street. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City staff.
Good evening.
I come before you all this evening to address the reservations around the Affordable Housing Bond. Housing in the city of Raleigh is a dire crisis currently. Prior to COVID-19, an affordable housing bond was developed with, a bond committee was developed with no vetting process and a lack of diversity for those who sit upon this committee, not to mention a couple of conflicts of interest. I come today to address the need to put the bond on hold until we can curate it with the precision and attention it requires. Currently, the bond committee is tasked with putting the bond package together with inclusion of the overall amount, buckets/c肝 categories, and the percentage per bucket/c category. This process has been streamlined, leaving the most important aspect out, civic engagement. A three-page online survey with no comment section in two languages for a phone call does not fill that void. Without civic engagement, our citizens are voting on something that they have not been properly educated on. I am in no way saying that we do not need an affordable housing bond. What I am saying is that we need a bond that is precise, effective, and equitable. Factors we should consider to put this bond on hold are the lack of the vetting process for those who sit on the committee, the lack of civic engagement, which includes assessing the need and educating the citizens on the bond, which is essentially a tax that they will pay back, voter uncertainties around what absentee voting or vote by mail will look like along with getting a good voter turnout, lack of diversity as far as the inclusion of Latino, Asian, Muslim, students, elders, and directly impacted persons affected by housing. Unpredictable COVID-19 recovery. With this unpredictability, why would we be so eager to push this tax on the citizens at this time? And also, interest rates being low is one of the major selling points. And currently, we know with the devastating impact of COVID-19, the interest rates will remain low for a while. We seriously need to take these factors into consideration. Housing is a human right. Please consider putting the Affordable Housing Bond on hold until we can properly assess, evaluate, and procure a process that will be diverse, effective, and efficient enough to thoroughly impact the most vulnerable and marginalized populations in need of housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Did we ever get Skip Stam back on the line?
We have Paul Stam back, and so we can come back to him.
Okay, great, thank you. Welcome.
Paul, go ahead. Paul, I don't think we can hear you. I think we just lost him again. I can call him back real quick if you would like.
Please try that.
Okay, one second.
Thank you to everyone for your patience as we get through this. Beth, let us know what is happening. One thing I could suggest is that we start with the first matter scheduled for public hearing. And then after that.
Yep, I got no answer, so if we want to do that, I'll let you know when we have him back on the phone.
Okay. The clerk? Gail, you're muted. We can't hear you.
Okay, now, can you hear me?
Yes.
We have several comments that were presented timely for public comment. If you would want me to read those to the record while you're waiting.
So, Robin, what is the? We read each of those up to the three-minute mark. Is that how that works?
That's how that works.
Okay, Beth, we will, the clerk will read these statements, and if you could continue to try and reach Skip, that would be great.
I will do.
Okay, Gail?
Okay, the first letter is from Natalie Lou, who lives in Raleigh, North Carolina. In the midst of this pandemic time, Wake Stone Corporation has submitted a mine and permit modification request to create a new quarry pit on land divested in part to Raleigh, North Carolina, known as the Odd Fellas. Given the pandemic, the public's ability to see the application and related documents in a timely manner is very negatively impacted. Please know that this mine and permit application is a totally separate issue than the lawsuit between Raleigh-Durham United Airport and Umstead. As you know, the creation of a new quarry pit on the Odd Fellas has been a controversial issue for many years. Citizens have submitted numerous comments to the current and previous mayor and city council informing you of opposition of this new rock quarry pit, which would be on land divested in part to Raleigh. The number of comments and messages that have been submitted confirms the desire by the public for the local governments, including Raleigh City Council, to express to NCDEQ the citizen's disapproval regarding this new quarry pit. In the Mining Act of 1971, from DEQ-mining website, section 75-50, 17B1 and B2, requires Raleigh City to be notified when a mine and permit application to add, to add land to an existing permitted area is received and to have the opportunity, excuse me, to have a public hearing and submit comments. Excerpts from the Mining Act of 1971, B1. At the time of an application for a new mine and permit or for modification of a mine and permit to add land to the permitted area, the applicant or operator shall make a reasonable effort satisfactory to the department to notify, one, the chief administrative officer of each county and municipality in which any part of the permitted area is located. B2. The notice shall inform the owners of record and the chief administrative officers of the opportunity to submit written comments to the department regarding the proposed mining operation and the opportunity to request a public hearing regarding the proposed mining operation. Requests for public hearings shall be made within 30 days of issuance of the notice. Therefore, by law, Raleigh City has an active role in the permit for the proposed new rock mine on the Odd Fellas track. Raleigh City can, by North Carolina state law, make comments regarding this quarry. I urge you to take advantage of this legal opportunity to speak on behalf of the citizens you represented. Raleigh City is not and should not be a bystander.
Clerk, the clock is no longer working. It's stuck at four seconds, but you've been going on past then. Can we get a reset on the clock? And I think time has run out.
I have one line. And this permit application be given a high public opposition. Per, per the public comment and email, I am asking that you request an in-person public hearing on the quarry permit matter. Express to NCDEQ your opposition to the proposed new quarry pit based upon negative impacts to citizens, Umstead State Park, and the Old Reedy Creek Recreational Corridor, a private home, Crabtree Creek, and ultimately on the city. Confirm or not if you receive the required notification of the recent Wake Stone Corporation, Corporation application and confirm the date or not you received a copy of the required notification. And that is the extent of that statement. There are two others.
I have a comment regarding this issue.
Can we please wait? Counselor Cox. Gail, you have two more.
Two fairly short ones on the same issue.
Okay, and we, these need to be read as well, correct? City Attorney?
Yes, yes, they do. The, the idea with public comment is that that's an opportunity for citizens to actually state their position at a meeting as opposed to just mailing or calling or emailing. So we have posted on our website that if you submit written comments up to an hour before the meeting, then they will be read into the record at the time of public comment. So the people submitted them with that expectation, and that's the way that we can do this remotely and still give them that same platform that the statutes require.
Clerk, if you would continue to read the next two items, please remember three-minute time limit. That went beyond that. And Counselor Branch, I need to step away for a moment. Could you?
I got it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next, the next letter is from Mara and Bud Frank. We are writing to request the Raleigh City Council formally request the NCDEQ to deny modification of mine and permit 92-10. We are opposed to any permit for any sort of continued quarrying near Umstead State Park on the grounds that it will slash does severely and negatively impact residents of our, from our city and our region. Approval of any permit application or permit modification has the potential to dramatically and negatively impact Crabtree Creek, its tributaries, and the surrounding watershed that the residents of, residents in the Triangle region value and depend upon. And additionally, blasting would result in an increase of dangerous particulars in our air and water in a cherished recreational area. Not to mention the very likely increase in noise pollution and ground shaking that residents in nearby peaceful neighborhoods would experience. There are at least three large schools within a couple of miles of the area addressed by permit 92-10. The schoolchildren have a right to clean air and freedom from unnecessary ground shaking. Our son and his cross-country track and teammates practiced almost every day at Umstead State Park before the stay-at-home orders were issued, along with teams from other schools in Raleigh and Wake County. If, if this permit modification is improved, it would expose kids and other residents who use the park to increase in levels of unhealthy air and water pollution. There is already visible runoff from the current quarry operation and waterways at Umstead Park. The growing populations of Raleigh and Wake County should not be exposed to increased pollution in and around Crabtree Creek and our state and county parks. We respectively request that the Raleigh City Council ask the governor and DEQ to deny the permit and also to allow an in-person avenue for public comment after the stay-at-home orders expire. Okay, and the third one, I'll just continue on, is from Brian D. Mohorn. I am asking the Raleigh City Council contact NCDEQ and ask that the recently submitted mine and permit for a new Wake Stone quarry on the Odd Fellas track be denied. I encourage Councilmembers to view the details of the application and ask yourself if Wake County needs a fifth quarry in a 10-mile radius. Now more than ever, it is time to evaluate how valuable recreational space can be and the need to preserve the open space that it cannot be used for aviation purposes. And that's it.
Hi, the mayor, you are muted. I think Counselor Cox?
Yes.
So I guess a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to know for the record, and it doesn't have to be answered right this minute, but did the city receive notice of the mining application? And I would like to make a motion that, because I think time is of the essence, that we send a letter to the DEQ asking that the mining application be denied, and then also that they hold a hearing, a public hearing regarding the mining application. So that's a motion.
Do we have a second on that motion? Counselor Martin?
Yes.
You're seconding the motion?
Yep.
Sir, I have a question about that show motion.
Yes.
So is the motion to deny and request a public hearing?
The request is to, obviously, they're not going to make a decision just based on receiving one letter. And so they will be receiving input from other people and other municipalities. I would like to us to send a letter expressing our position that the application should be denied, and then also to request that there be a public hearing rather than making a decision without a public hearing.
So, so I'm not going to say I'm for the quarry, this permit, but these emails is the first I've heard of this permit. And I know we asked staff to let us know if they've received anything. And I think that's a fair question. I'm, I'm torn because, because I hopefully see the dilemma I'm in because I would like to know the information I'm making of, like what property we're making a decision on and everything, but if you have a motion on the floor, I just want to.
This was sent out a few weeks ago, so time is of the essence.
But I just want to share my unreadiness because I'm unsure.
I'm, I understand what you're talking about, Counselor Branch. Can I ask either the city attorney or the city manager to? Can I ask either the city attorney or the city manager to address this? I mean, is, what is the protocol? And can you give us some more information?
Yeah, let me, if, Robin, if you don't mind, let me go first, just to be, just to be clear, because of the previous attributes, we've been trying to make sure that the city attorney's office is the primary lead on that. So I'd have to defer to Robin about knowledge of any notification. I have not received any specific notification. Now, I'm not aware, maybe that came through one of our departments, and so I would need to verify or ask if that somehow came through in a way that I haven't seen it. But as of this moment, I have not received any notification, but I'll turn it over to Robin to comment further.
I don't know any notification. It probably would not come to me. The provision that they were citing are letters that go to adjacent property owners, which we're actually a property owner. I think that we probably should have been sent a letter. I don't know that we were or were not, but we can look into that. With respect to the mining permit process, the application, there's a website on the state that indicates that the application was filed probably the first week of April, and it does allow anybody to ask for a public hearing. It needs to be within 30 days of the notification. I don't know that we got it. I do think that we certainly would have standing to make a request. There also is a address to submit comments, so if a majority of council wanted to submit comments to the state mining division, we could do that. I would say that there are very detailed environmental considerations to this type of thing, so the comments would probably need to be ones that went to whether or not they met the state requirements for a mining permit as opposed to just that we didn't want it. We would probably, they would listen to comments that went to the validity of the mining permit standards, if you will.
Then I would recommend that we address specifically the environmental impacts of the mine on Umstead State Park, on our municipality, and the surrounding neighborhoods and community. Base our objections on those.
Counselor Knight?
Yeah, I guess, I think all of us would like to know more about this before we, before we make a decision, but I appreciate the essence of time issue. I guess it depends on, do we know when this permit has to be issued? You know, there's usually a notice period and then the public hearing period and then when it has to be issued. So that's one sort of procedural question that I'd like to know how, is this, is there an essence of time question here, or do we have time to take it under more consideration and have a full discussion about it?
I am not comfortable voting on this tonight with, considering this is the, this is the first really hearing about this. Can I ask, there is a motion there, but I'm going to make a substitute, well, not a substitute motion, we'll, we'll see if it comes to that, but I would feel much more comfortable if we got a report back from this, on this matter from the city attorney's office, so we have a better understanding of what, what legally we can do and also whether, and just process this. This is the first I'm hearing about this, so I'm not comfortable moving forward.
Madam?
I would have to vote against it tonight if we insist on voting.
Madam Mayor, I would be willing to at least ask for a public hearing on it. That's one part that I think, that makes some sense. I think that's the part, that's why I asked, I was specifically asking about the motion that was made, because the motion was to send a letter to deny and request a public hearing. I like the public hearing request part, but I'm uncomfortable right now with sending any type of letter without having the information.
I'm going to come to the whole thing right now, so.
Would that substitute motion, Mr. Branch?
Yes, that would be a substitute motion that I would make for more, to receive a letter from staff as well as to find out if we receive information from staff, if we receive the letter as well, for the permit, as well as ask for a public hearing as the law does, you know, give us permission to do.
Well, that's the part I'm not clear on.
Robin, what's the procedure with the substitute motion? Does that have to be seconded?
Yes. So, but what question am I being asked about a parliamentary procedure or the procedure to request a public hearing?
No, I'm, I'm asking about a procedure to request a public hearing.
There's a statute on that, and as I said, generally, the letters are going out to adjacent property owners. We're in sort of a strange spot because we actually are a property owner, and so the statute doesn't say that the property owner sends one to itself. The matter at the Court of Appeals right now, what the judge has ruled is that the airport has the authority, they are, in essence, for purposes of this particular quarry, they're the property owner, so they're the applicant. So we're, we're in sort of a, a no man's land for this particular application, if you will, because usually you don't have owners who don't have the right to actually, you know, enter into the lease. I do think that I can contact the state and Wake Stone, and I believe if a majority of council wanted to make that request, I would think that they would entertain it because we are in fact a property owner, which is really more of an interest than an adjacent one. So I can definitely reach out to them and find out about that. The, the process is not hard. You just write a letter and say, I'd like to request a public hearing. The website currently says that they haven't decided one way or the other whether they're going to have a public hearing, but they're taking it under consideration at this time. So I'm glad to go ahead and take that step, if you will, to find out, you know, how we would do it as soon as possible, if you'd like me to. And then beyond that, the public hearing would be, council would have to decide, you know, who they would want to make those comments and how they would relate again to the actual mining permit requirements as opposed to just, I like it or don't like it, because that's what the, the state is going to look at as opposed to just whether people support it or.
And, and Robin, wouldn't the state actually run the public hearing, DEQ?
Yes, 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 absolutely.
So Counselor Branch, you have made a motion. I'm going to say again, I'm not comfortable moving forward this at this time. Now, if Robin could get us information tomorrow and we are better informed, I would feel much more comfortable, but I have to vote no under these circumstances. I just want to be better informed and understand what the implications are, any unintended consequences, if legally, legally we can actually do this. Nobody's answering those questions.
And I think too, if we make the request for a public hearing and they say, no, we can't ask for it, they'll let us know, but I'm just looking for the sake of time and finding a way to work with fellow council members, that's the only one I mentioned.
Counselor Stewart, then Counselor Melton, and then Counselor Cox.
I just want to express my interest in Councilmember Branch's substitute motion in getting more information from staff and then asking for a public hearing that DEQ would host, so I think it'd be really interesting for them to hear some of the comments we've been hearing for quite some time.
Counselor Melton?
Yeah, I'm not sure what's happening right now, and I don't know a more delicate way to say that, but Councilmember Cox made a motion, Councilmember Branch made a substitute motion. Was that seconded? Are we voting on, what, what's happening?
Not voting on anything yet. Counselor Branch made a substitute motion. We waiting to see if there's a second. We're having discussion first, so we're not voting yet.
Okay, I would second Councilmember Branch's substitute motion.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
So the motion is to request a public hearing on the quarry as well as ask staff to come back and provide us the information on, one, did we receive a permit request, and also any other information they have on this additional quarry that is being requested by Wake Stone.
May I follow up, Mayor?
Counselor Cox is on line next, and then Counselor Buffkin. You made a second of the motion, is that correct?
I seconded, I seconded Councilmember Branch's substitute motion. What I was going to say was is that I do not feel comfortable taking any action on making a position until we have information, but I do, I will support making the request to allow a public hearing to happen with DEQ.
Counselor Cox, and then Counselor Buffkin.
I will support Counselor Branch's motion. I would like to separate the two issues, and so I would like to support Counselor Branch's motion to request a hearing.
And you're withdrawing your motion?
I'm withdrawing my motion, but I would like to make a separate motion as far as sending a letter regarding denial of the application.
So Counselor Branch's motion is what's being considered right now. Counselor Buffkin, you had your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to ask the same question, in as much as Mr. Branch's motion has two, two issues, it seems like it'd be a little more straightforward to vote on the two questions separately, that being whether to ask staff for the memo is the first question, and the second question being whether to ask DEQ to hold a public hearing.
Well, I think we're going to need the information regardless from staff, so I just put it in there. Regardless of what the motions are made, we're going to be asking staff for what do they, what have they received?
Yes, well, I guess, if I may, Mayor?
Please.
I, I guess, Councilmember Branch, what I'm suggesting is that dividing the two questions is important to me because I'm perfectly comfortable getting advice from our city staff and learning more about the process and what's involved in issuing a permit. I'm, I'm not quite as comfortable asking for a public hearing. I don't know what the issues are. I don't know where the hearing would be held, how that process works. Once we ask for the public hearing, are we obligated to provide comments? Are we, are we, you know, expected to participate? I, I think that, in my view, the two questions have a very different flavor, so I would, I would like to divide this question into two separate votes.
Can you answer those questions, Robin? Are we obligated to participate in a hearing if we request it?
No, I don't think that you are. I, I would say that if you asked for it and then you didn't participate, and that was a motivating factor for holding the hearing, it might not send the right message about the city. I wouldn't, if other people are participating, which I think they would be, so if you could say, you're asking for the public hearing not only for your input, but to allow the input of other concerned citizens, I think that would be fine.
Right, that's my main motivation, is to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak.
The other thing is, comments are always allowed regardless of whether there's a hearing, so it may be a good, you can split that up. So just because you don't ask for a hearing or there, there's not a hearing, it doesn't mean that you couldn't submit written comments if that's what council decided to do. And I can forward you what I have pulled up on the screen from DEQ's website, which contains the application, the way to submit comments, and basically tells you where they are in the process.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So I hate to throw the lawyer hat on here, but it, so I'm very, take the substance out of this. The process here, I don't know what the process is, and I have a sense that nobody else knows what the process is, and I, and again, I hate for us to jump into something that we really don't know what we're doing. And again, i- if we can make a motion that we find out the timing of all this, because i- i- I mean, and I appreciate Counselor Cox in the essence of time, but I haven't heard him say what that's based on, and so if, if we have, you know, make a motion where let's find out what the timing is, the process is, and then if we need a special session, a special meeting, we could do that, and I think everybody would be glad to do that, but I, I feel really uncomfortable moving forward with not knowing more inform, not knowing more about what the process is about all this.
It's based on Section 74-50 under the Mining Statute, Permits General.
And I, and I, you know, unless Robin's ready to take us through that, I, you know, I'm, you know, I'm not an expert on that section of the law, and I don't think anybody else here is too. But again, I'm glad to move this forward, but I want to know what we're actually doing because I'm not sure we really know what we're doing.
Counselor Stewart?
I'm starting to backtrack on how I'm feeling about this in light of our lovely attorneys who serve on this council and their thoughtfulness around this. I, I think we need, we need to just get more information right now before we can make any kind of informed decision. I'm also quite frustrated that none of us, to my knowledge, were approached by Mr. Cox to know that you were going to bring this up. That would have been very helpful.
I was going to bring it up until five minutes before the meeting when I was informed of this.
Then I think that says a lot about our preparedness to actually move forward in this moment. Thank you.
Counselor Buffkin, then Counselor Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my sense that a majority of the council is not prepared to vote for this. I move that the motion pending before council do lie upon the table.
May I ask Counselor Melton to, he had his hand raised?
Yeah, I was just going to say that upon further discussion, I, I don't feel ready to move on this either. I was trying to be helpful in sort of bifurcating the motions that were being made, which is why I seconded Counselor Branch's motion, but I don't feel ready to act on this right now. I think we need some more information. That's what I was going to say.
So we have a choice here. Patrick, you have asked that the, I'm sorry, Counselor Buffkin, you have asked that this be ta, what did you say?
Well, just to postpone consideration of this motion.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Can I add a friendly, not substitute, add a, what's the word, addition to say that, could our attorney look into this and come back with us, to us within 24 hours?
That's, that's a separate thing, David. That will be dividing direction. We're dealing right now with the motion, so would anyone like to second that motion? Counselor Stewart? All in favor? Hand raised? So that's everyone but Counselor Cox, Counselor Branch, and Counselor Martin. So 5-3 to table. Based on the discussion, I'm going to ask the city attorney to try to get to us within 24 hours. If, let me put it this way, if you find out that this is a looming deadline and time is of the essence, as was stated, could you get something to us within 24 hours? If we have a little more time than that, I, I'd rather have something done well than something done fast and have as much information as possible, but if you could get a report back to us, it would be much appreciated.
I will do that. I will note too that I'm looking at the website now, and it says that they are currently evaluating the need for a public hearing, so I do know that that question is in front of them. As far as our input, we'll find out as quick- As far as our input, we'll find out as quick as we possibly can. But based on what I'm looking at now, somebody has already made that request and they are evaluating it. So if that gives you any degree of comfort, depending on how fast I can get in touch with someone tomorrow. I do think that if the notice was given, that it would probably have gone to Ruffin or gone to someone who would have sent it probably immediately to me. So we'll do a research I can, but I'm not sure who else at the city would have, have received it. But we'll take a look at that.
If we find, a question?
Counselor Cox?
If we find that we've received notice and time is of the essence, what would be the procedure for us to get a letter to the department requesting a public hearing?
We would have to take a vote on that. And so, we would need two days' notice for a special hearing. And so, that's what I asked the city attorney to please look into, what the timeframe is, and then base that timeframe on how quickly we could respond to that.
Could we instead give the attorney direction that if we need to submit such a letter, that she just go ahead and do it? Otherwise, we wait?
I don't feel comf, I, I think we just said we're not comfortable with that until we get more information. So that was a five, three vote. So I'm, I'm asking the city attorney to please get us that information so we can make an informed decision.
I will get on it very second. That's the beauty of text. We probably can't get much more, but I, I can get my, my folks on, on the case, and I have already asked them to do so, so.
And if we do, do we, if we feel like we need to have a motion that's passed that gives us the next step, because otherwise, we will have to, I guess, I don't know how we figure out how to take a next step without, to, to meet. And I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable to do that if that's what the council thinks we need to make sure we have the next step once we learn this information. Not to do something, but to take a step in the process, meaning if we meet again for a special meeting or whatever.
Can we notice a special meeting tonight? And if we don't need it, then we just don't meet, or we meet and don't do anything?
I'm not sure what purpose that serves.
It saves time. So we can notice a meeting 48 hours from now instead of 72 hours from now. I don't know, Robin, what, what are your thoughts?
Um, I probably have to look at the statute. Generally, the way that you would notice a special meeting would be to post it on the website. We, we, we would have to actually go through, I think, a drafting of an actual notice. The web platform makes it a little trickier. So we would have to be able to, you know, get all the technology set up. And that's really rough and chum in here. It's, if you're just gonna meet without a virtual platform, you can, you know, call the mayor, Mayor Pertim, or two council members can call a special meeting. And it's not that complicated if you're meeting in the chambers. But I, I would just defer to Ruffin and staff constraints on how that would be put together in that short amount of time.
Uh, I think we, the staff would do whatever we can to support the council's goals. So i- if, um, I think then, in, in that case, there's two choices. One choice is for the council to receive additional update from the city attorney regarding the specific process and deadlines, and then have the mayor call a special meeting, because that is one of the provisions that allows you to call a special meeting. Or you could set another meeting tonight for a time and date certain at least 48 hours from now, and we would immediately begin to prepare for that, posting it on the website to account for this virtual meeting. Now, assuming that that meeting you would call would have no public hearing and no public consideration to that other than just the meeting with the council and the staff, that's a little bit easier to pull off, because we don't have to do the phone calling type of thing, and we don't have to tell them where to sign up. And so, it's a little bit easier when it's just the council and the staff, like a work session. Format, so I think you would probably need to either decide to set a meeting at least 48 hours from now, and we'll get it posted on the website and proceed, and then you can cancel it. Or you have the mayor use that provision to call a special meeting once you receive the information from the attorney. I think those are the two practical choices.
And can I say one other thing? You know, I will know better, probably, hopefully, tomorrow early about where we are. I would hate, well, I guess you can just cancel the meeting, but we could call it, and I can be, you know, not have all the information I need in, in 48 hours. I probably will know better tomorrow how quick I'm gonna be able to get the information together. And then there are other ways to call it. I mean, feel, I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just saying I can't promise that, because it's night and I haven't had an opportunity to, to contact anybody and get more information, I don't know that we'll be ready. You can call it, you can cancel it, and then call another one, however you'd like to do it. But hopefully, I will know more tomorrow.
It would be to wait until the city attorney comes forward with the information, and then we can evaluate that and then decide whether we want to move forward with a special meeting. And I see a lot of shaking of heads, so I'm going to assume that that is the opinion of the majority, and ask that we actually move on to matters scheduled for public hearing. I think everybody's clear on what the expectations are, and that fir, the first determination is, is time of the essence? That's what we need to know. If time is of the essence, then we will act accordingly. But then we need to know what we're acting on as well. So, thank you, city attorney, for getting on the case. Okay? All right, so our first matter scheduled for public hearing.
Excuse me, Mayor? Apologies, we do have Paul Stam, who was the one.
Oh, he's back, okay. Hi, Skip.
Hey, Mayor Baldwin and counsel, thanks for your patience. I'm 71400 Street, Apex, North Carolina. And I will be very brief. I've given a lengthy documentation of my request to staff, and hopefully, they can send it to you to read. Here's, here's my request. For 43 years, I've been coming into Raleigh regular, mostly to the Redford Deeds. And Nash Square is between Redford Deeds and the city, city hall. And so, I've passed, uh, on McDowell Street there hundreds of times, and there's this nice statue of Josephus Daniels, eight feet tall, that tells that truthfully, he was Secretary of Navy, Ambassador of Mexico. He was, um, trustee of UNC. But that's only half the story. And although I vaguely knew about this for about 15 years, I read a book, Wilmington's Lie, recently, that documented that he was one of the two people who instigated a murderous, bloody coup d'état in Wilmington in 1898. I've seen estimates of 40, 50, 60 people murdered as a result of it, resulted in the violent overthrow of the elected government of Wilmington, I think the first successful coup d'état in America, exile from North Carolina for many African-Americans, and the solidification of Jim Crow. It's time for Raleigh to set the stage right at Nash Square. I'm not asking that statue come down, I'm not asking that his beautiful inscription come down, but just for historical context, maybe put a plaque next door to it that says what actually happened in 1898 and 1900, uh, when he was the leader of the white supremacy movement of North Carolina. Thank you very much. A small request.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Mr. City Manager, could we get a staff report on this? I believe this issue may have come up before, but we have pretty much a fairly new council. Can we get a staff report on this, just kind of outlining ownership and options, et cetera?
Uh, we can, we would be happy to provide a report. I would ask that we engage the skillful assistance of our city attorney's office, who has got someone actually who's done some research from the land and the, the relationship of Nash Square on the case. So if you don't mind, between Robyn Tatum and myself, we'll get you a, a report on this topic.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your patience. Skip, and coming back and forth onto the call, we, we appreciate you being on here. All right. Thank you. Um, okay. So we are now going to our first matter scheduled for public hearing. There's no one else on the line, right, Beth? We got everybody? I'm assuming so. Okay, our first annexation petition, Gabriel Bend and Ebenezer contiguous inside the ETJ. And that is Christopher Golden is the staff person on this?
So Mayor, what I would offer on this particular item is I don't believe we have anybody signed up to speak.
No, we do not.
The rest of the items, we, we have a little blurb that we would wanna introduce, but on this one, I'm not certain it's necessary. So you may wanna hold the public hearing and then see if you have any questions.
Okay. Let's open this up for public hearing. Ken, is there anything you just want to say briefly? Oh, good, okay. Do we, I'm going to now close the public hearing. Do we have any questions from the council? Okay, that being the case, do I hear a vote, I mean, a motion to approve? Counselor Knight, do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Branch, okay. All in favor, raise your hand, aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Next item is the compre, uh, it's the substantial amendment to the Annual Action Plan slash CARES Act funding. And Larry Jarvis is our point person on this.
Good evening. Again, going back to one of our previous council meetings, I would think that was the second meeting in April, where we talked about the process for receiving the additional CARES Act money was to amend the current annual action plan that we have with HUD. So that's what we're doing here tonight, conducting that public hearing. So you can approve the amendment, we can submit it to HUD, uh, and actually get access to those funds. So if we go to the next slide, Michelle. So again, tonight, we're gonna look at the new funding sources, proposed use of funds, next steps. Again, going back to the April 21 city council meeting, our council approved the proposed CARES Act program areas. You authorized staff to administer the CARES Act funding. And in response to that direction, staff issued a letter of interest solicitation that was released to the nonprofit partners on April 30. And that was in consultation with nonprofit partners, the county, et cetera. So the, again, as we discussed at that previous city council meeting, the community development block grant, CV funding, is almost 1.9 million, primarily intended to provide additional funds to help low-income and homeless residents impacted by COVID-19. With the emergency solutions grant funding of 950,000, again, also provides additional funds to help persons impacted by COVID-19. And again, we need to amend that current annual action plan to access those funds. So looking at ESG, most of this would not mean much to any of you, but it waives any type of local match, slightly increases the administration. We can go up to 50% AMI with homelessness prevention, and there's no spending caps on shelter and street outreach. With the CWG funds, a major change is a five-day public comment period as used, as opposed to the customary 30-day comment period, allows for virtual public hearings, programmatic waivers, and we are still anticipating and needing additional guidance from HUD on how those funds can actually be used. But at a high level, we're looking at the CWG funds being used for rent, utility, and mortgage aid, and for nonprofit services. Services by the nonprofits would be on a fee-for-service basis. With the ESG funds, homelessness prevention, rapid rehousing would be the primary activities. So again, with the CWG funds, operational support for nonprofits, assisting low-income renters struggling to keep up with rent and utilities, they can receive three months of assistance under the CWG program. Homeowners could receive mortgage assistance and utility assistance for up to three months as well. So again, more specifically, possible uses of the ESG funds. Again, the focus on homelessness prevention, that's where we're talking about rent and utilities. That also includes arrears, old debt, money that I owed in the past, as a means of preventing eviction. Rapid rehousing, which could include rental assistance deposits in case management, and of course, administration. So the next steps, again, would be to submit the amendment to HUD for approval, assuming that you approve it tonight. The responses to the letter of interest solicitation that we put out there on the 30th is due to us on the 15th. We would then move to quickly expedite necessary agreements to get assistance out to those in need as quickly as possible. Obviously, we would report to council via the manager's update and other means on progress. We would continually evaluate that progress and needed adjustments continuously. One of the things that we tried to stress to you at the meeting that we had previously is that we have a whole new population of people who are in need that our nonprofit partners have never served before. So there's going to be some growing pains that we'll need to go through to put the infrastructure in place to actually assist some of these folks. But with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Hey, does the council have any questions before I open the hearing? So primarily, this money is for eviction prevention and also rapid rehousing, and ensuring that people, it's, it's basically prevention-based?
Most of it is prevention, but again, although people, you know, who have mortgage payments, you know, they always have arrears as a cure, but this is to help them, you know, not get behind the eight ball.
Okay.
But most of these people, I would anticipate, are gonna be renters.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna open the public hearing. We have one person, I believe, on the line who has signed up to speak. His name is Larry Helfont.
Mayor, he is not on the call.
He is not on the call. Okay.
Gail Smith has something to.
Yes.
He has withdrawn, he had signed up, but, um, again, signed up in era and had, I think, sent you an email on the issue that he was involved in. But I do have a, a public comment that came in earlier today from Suzanne Bott, asking the city council to support this amendment. The citizens of Raleigh need continuing additional help in wake of the COVID-19 pandemic and its immersive economic impact on our city. Thank you for your hard work during this difficult time.
Thank you. Okay, well, with that, I will close the hearing. Do I have a motion to approve, Counselor Branch?
Amendment to approve the fiscal year 2019, 20 annual action plan.
Do I have a second? Counselor Stewart, thank you. All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Clerk, thank you very much. Next, we have the comprehensive plan, let me just make sure this is right. Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CR 120, Swift Creek Watershed District. Nine. Okay. We have two people who have signed up to speak, Henry McNair and Molly Stewart. Both applicants, I believe. I believe. And so we had discussed this earlier today, that we would hold the public hearing and then defer this to our May 19 meeting when we take up the other matter. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
Robin, you're looking at me like with a furrowed brow.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Oh, no, it was not, I wasn't looking at you with a furrowed brow. I was looking, something, I was reading with a furrowed brow.
Okay. All right. So I am going to open the hearing.
Madam Mayor, could we have staff briefly give what this amendment is? Because I think the presentation takes like...
Okay.
Four slides.
Go Bynum.
Thank you. Bynum Walter, Raleigh Planning and Development. This is a request to amend the comprehensive plan, specifically the Swift Creek watershed area plan section of the comprehensive plan. So just one particular policy is requested to be amended. And the area plan represents Raleigh's commitment to a land management plan that was adopted, completed in 1987, and an interlocal agreement that we signed on to in 2017 to protect Lake Benson. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the planning commission recommends approval with revision. So the policy to be amended is quite long. It basically offers specific guidance about impervious limits in the watershed. And the part that is to be amended, I'm showing you what the planning commission is recommending. So the applicant asked that the 5% of impervious be changed to a specific number of acres. The planning commission is recommending that the policy be amended to include a specific number of acres and a percent. And also, this language at the end, whichever is less, establishing that whichever is less of the two numbers would be the limit on the impervious, which keeps it, in keeping with the, makes us in our practice, regulating the impervious in a similar way to other jurisdictions in the land management plan and in the interlocal agreement, and also keeps the actual area of impervious comparable or within, not too very different from how it is now, regardless of how many acres the city actually has in the ETJ. So fixes the limit, establishes that particular number of acres. And I just will say, this is a request from the same applicant that has requested the ETJ relinquishment. And so keeping the denominator, the total number of acres that we're considering, taking that out of the equation, limiting how that shifts as our ETJ changes, is really the intent of the recommended revision that the planning commission has delivered to you. What questions can I answer for you about the comp plan amendment?
If you will take that down, Bynum, so I can see people as they raise their hands. Counselor Stewart, then Counselor Cox.
Thank you. Ms. Bynum, I am one, Ms. Walters, sorry.
Thanks, Detective.
Yeah, of course. I'm wondering if this is still necessary to move forward if we don't approve removing the 200-some-odd acres out of our ETJ?
No, it's not. But the amendment does, also doesn't obligate you to take action on the relinquishment.
And is there any benefit in going ahead and doing this, even if we weren't, like, no matter how we acted on the ETJ issue?
I think that establishing the number and the percent together better articulates the intent of the city. And then the whichever, adding that whichever or less language keeps the impervious amount as low as possible in that particular context. And it also would give you flexibility in considering either the ETJ relinquishment that's in front of you now, or any future relinquishment that you might consider in the watershed.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cox?
Yes, I was wondering, that 154 acres, does that actually represent 10%? Or approximately 10%?
No, the 134 is closer to the 4.4%.
Okay, okay, I must have misread it. I thought it said 154. Okay, so 134 represents closer to 4%. Okay. So if it's 134 represents a little less than 5%, and we're saying whichever is less, then why would we want language that says up to 10%?
Because if you take the, if the amount of acreage in the city's jurisdiction overall is decreased, then even if the amount of impervious is constant, the percent would increase.
I see, okay. But it would still be a total of 134 acres total for the entire area. Okay, thank you.
That high school math is really paying off for me tonight.
Anyone else have any questions before we start the public hearing? Okay, I'm opening the public hearing. We have Henry McNair and Molly Stewart on the line. You would like to speak?
Yes, this is Molly Stewart. Thank you. I wanted to first acknowledge that although we weren't with staff to create the proposal that we put forward, we absolutely support the change that staff has made. We, you know, we worked with them to try to, try to make it clear that the proposal is not intended to change the total amount of impervious surface or the amount of urban area, either within the city or within the watershed. And therefore, the acreage cap is absolutely, that works very well for us as well, that's no problem. And that just reinforces the fact that this area, this piece of land, is governed by the Swift Creek Land Management Plan, and that's regardless of the jurisdiction that it's in. It will be designated rural under either jurisdiction, and therefore, really maintain the same overall density uses, that sort of thing, regardless. And in fact, I know we discussed this a little bit this afternoon, but given the difference in development standards between the city, which focuses on urban development, and the county, which is more experienced at the rural development, the types of streets, the sidewalks, the curb and gutter, that sort of detail, as far as how development would occur, may actually lead to significantly less impervious surface if developed under the county standard. And so this is just a matter of, you know, we've got a piece of land sitting here in the ETJ, which typically indicates that the city intends to annex it at some point, intends to serve it with water and sewer, and to develop it in an urban way. The city has expressed that is not the case here, and this will always be rural. And that's, you know, obviously guided by the city's policies, it would be by the counties and by the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. Therefore, it's just a better fit with the county overall, and it really reinforces the fact that this is intended by all parties to be a rural area, and to continue to be protected by that land management plan. Also, just note that Henry McNair is here with the property owners. In case you have additional questions for him, I don't believe that he's, intends to speak otherwise, but I did want you to know that he's here in case you do have those questions. Thank you.
My daughter took horseback riding lessons at McNair, so familiar with the property.
I understand that's intended to remain.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of the applicants? Okay, that being the case, we will close the public hearing. Or keep it open, Robin, and defer to two weeks? Or do, can we close it?
Well, I don't know of any time limitations for comp plan amendments in the UDO. Are there, Bynum?
No, ma'am, there are not. They could close the hearing and defer action as long as they like.
So I think the answer to that is yes, unless for some reason you wanted to hear more.
Okay, is anybody, is everybody okay with that, closing the hearing and deferring action for May 19? Okay, I see a lot of heads nodding. Okay, all right, that's what we will do then. Hearing is closed. And if we could bring this back for a meeting on the 19th, coincide with our discussion on the other item. Okay, thank you. Next, we have, let me see, CP 1119, which is the comprehensive plan amendment for West Morgan Street. Bynum, you're up again.
Yes, ma'am. This is a request to remove a portion of the West Morgan Street extension between Wakefield and Ash Avenue. Just going to wait for the slides to come up so you can see the map. It's the next one. No, I mean, it's the next case. Oh, sorry, a little technical. Here we go. So this request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, regardless, the planning commission recommends approval, and this also was reviewed by the Hillsborough Wade CAC. They also are in support of the removal. So you can see on the screen here, this is a piece of West Morgan Street between Wakefield and Ash Avenue, so it would extend Morgan Street west behind what many Raleigh folks would know of as Goodnight Comedy Club. So you can see that I would remove it from the map. And just to give you a sense of what this area is like, so you can see the comedy club that I mentioned labeled as commercial on the map. And then the parcel that is most impacted by the proposed street is outlined in yellow. You can see that a very long, narrow building is constructed there currently. It's a number of efficiency units that are in common ownership, and so they're asking to take the street plan off the map so that they would not have to build the street. And on the next slide, you'll be able to see some work that Raleigh Transportation, or sorry, Raleigh Engineering Services has done to evaluate the size and configuration of the road that would be built if the street plan were to be fulfilled. And it, in general, really occupies the entirety of that parcel in question, which is driving the applicant's interest in removing the street proposal. And again, this is inconsistent with the plan. We are looking for greater connectivity in this area as envisioned by the West Morgan area plan. Broader redevelopment was expected in this area that would engage the long, narrow parcel and the one to the east of it. And again, inconsistent with the plan overall, but keeping it on the map and development of the street would essentially occupy the entirety of that long, narrow parcel in question. What questions could I answer for you about the amendment as proposed by private property owners?
The property in question is, oh, is basically affordable. Is that correct?
Yes. Efficiency units, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Counselor Branch?
Just from my understanding, as long as this street is currently mapped there, they're not able to do any type of redevelopment because this street is mapped there. Is that correct?
That's right. Redevelop, any significant improvement they would want to make to the site would trigger the right-of-way dedication.
Counselor Martin?
Actually, I have to wait for the, I'm ahead of myself, sorry.
Any other questions for staff before we open the hearing? Counselor Buffett?
Thank you, Mayor. So it is my understanding that this roadway, there's a significant elevation change from Ash Avenue down to Morgan Street. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, if we could go back to that drawing, you can see there's an area highlighted in green on the city-generated drawing that indicates some expected fill that would be necessary. Right, so you can see the area of fill indicated in green on the drawing here.
Thank you.
There is a significant grade change there. Yes, sir.
Thank you. And just in a, I guess as a follow-up question, maybe to state the obvious, but this is going to be a really expensive road, and perhaps maybe impractical to build. Is that, is that a fair assessment? I mean, it doesn't really come through on this drawing, but I'm familiar with the area, having gone to NC State and spent some time around there. So is, anyway, do you have any advice for us on that, or any perspective, I guess I should say?
I think I already said, and I would just say again, that development of the road would severely limit development of the narrow parcel between Wakefield and Ash. So regardless of the cost to build the road, any other development on that parcel would be exceptionally limited.
Understood. Thank you.
I'm going to open the public hearing. I have one speaker scheduled, David Brown. David, are you on the line?
Good evening, Mayor Baldwin, members of the council. I am here. I am joined by Attorney Thomas Worth. We have a couple of quick comments. Bynum did an excellent job presenting the case, but there are a couple of technical issues that were brought up. There's about 45 feet of grade change in the area of this road construction over a relatively short travel distance. That grade change, combined with being a single-loaded street, because the street runs parallel to the railroad, in our experience, makes that an inefficient road, and it is expensive, construction costs compared to a typical street setting. We also believe that the connection to Ash Avenue conflicts with the existing and successful traffic calming program for the Ash Avenue neighborhood. Regarding block perimeter, there are three blocks in the area formed by the North Carolina Railroad, Ash Avenue, Hillsborough Street, and Morgan Street. And all three of those blocks are conforming for block perimeter, so there is no issue here to solve for connectivity. I think our major point is that, it's already been brought up, there are 100 naturally occurring affordable housing units sitting on this property, and to construct the road would mean the removal of all 100 units. And as Bynum pointed out in her review, 28 in favor, 10 opposed at the Wade-Hillsborough CAC, unanimous recommendations for support at the planning commission. We hosted a voluntary neighborhood meeting, and we are not aware of any neighborhood opposition to this request. We're here if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions from council members? Counselor Cox?
Yeah, I was just wondering what the current zoning is on that property.
It is RX 3, residential mixed use.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to close the...
Mayor Baldwin, we had one other comment, if we may. We would like to point out that this request does not remove... We would like to point out that this request does not remove the very important greenway connection that runs parallel to this road alignment. We are in full support of the greenway connection between these two points.
Okay, I was just jotting that down, thank you. Okay, well, I'm going to close the public hearing since there are no other comments or questions. Do we have a motion to approve? Counselor Martin?
Yes, I move to adopt the resolution as it appears in the agenda materials.
Okay, second, Counselor Branch? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, passes unanimously. Next is rezoning Z2319, Strickland Road. Bynum, you're up again.
Thank you, I don't have any new information to add. You have continued this public hearing several times. I made a presentation to you in early February, and I think you have been continuing for discussion among yourselves with the applicant. So I have no new information tonight.
Okay, Counselor Knight has asked that we allow each side on this issue to give four, have, be allowed four minutes of public comment. So what I'm going to do, I have on this issue Timothy Now and Janet McLean listed as supporting. And is there anybody else on the line in support of this project?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then you have Dr. McLean and Timothy Now have four minutes total time to speak.
Okay, Janet McLean, can you hear me?
Yes ma'am, we can.
Okay, 119 Lincoln Court, Raleigh, North Carolina. Now, I've addressed the opposition for the R10 zoning that was expressed to me with the neighborhood meeting. And I'm going over it for you. Number one, they object to seeing the townhouses out of their back doors. The conditions I offered has the setbacks, fencing, extra trees, and will eliminate the visual intrusion that they oppose. And second, opposition to the increase in traffic that my proposed community of 32 townhouses will create. The newly approved subdivision north will provide one way in and one way out. Transportation Department has made its traffic study and has reported no issues of concern. Number three, opposition to increased density. I have added a condition to reduce density by almost half, from 10 units per acre to 6 units per acre. Number four, apartments are prohibited. Number five, opposition to the crossing of Heshnight Creek for environmental concerns. Because I was illegally landlocked west, east, and south by the Springdale developers, I must cross the creek north for access to Strickland Road. The North Carolina Environmental Protection Agency has allowed creek crossing. The same creek flows through Springdale subdivision, and the same allowances was given to them, allowance was given to them 40 years ago for four more crosses within the community. So I don't see where that would make a big difference here. The issue of property values being negatively impacted is the six and change in the character of the community is the other issue. There's no evidence that townhouses that coexist in subdivisions with single homes lower property values for single homes. We have many examples of that, local subdivisions. And next door to them is the Draymore Manor, which they have, it's a 103-town home, community located next door. And they have lived with them 20 years in harmony with the Springdale community and shared boundaries with at least 11 residents. When I applied for rezoning last spring, it was my intent to return my property to its original R4 zoning, which Springdale HOA had taken away from me, and they downzoned my property to R2 while I was in Chicago in violation and never, and without notification, violation of the required owner notification. It was only after sketch review attended by representatives of all divisions of the Planning Department that I learned that my land cannot support the codes and ordinances of Raleigh for R2 or R4 zone requirements. The existence of power line creek encroachment irregular parcel configuration has eliminated the required road width for single homes. It was determined that my property can only support the road width requirement allowed for R10, and is the only option to develop my land. And also by the opposition to sell me a portion of the property under the power line will not solve the problem. The opposition votes cannot change the physicality of the land nor the ordinance and code for planning in Raleigh. Because there are other problems with the property that would not, cannot be, cannot conform to that zoning. My property is the last of approximately 100 acres that my great-great-grandfather, a former slave, bought in 1879. The remaining acres were developed 40 years ago by Allen Head, a prominent local attorney, and resident, and O'Neil, a prominent developer. The subdivisions were named Springdale Estates and Springdale Gardens. It is because my family exercised its right to refuse to sell to them their inherited portion of Clayburn Fletch's 100-acre estate. And the illegal steps that were taken by Head and O'Neil to ensure that the land would never be developed is the reason why I am before you tonight. First, the Wake County Court favored the developers over my family in the recombination and division proceeding. As a result, the judge deeded two of the most substandard parcels of the 100 acres to my family, my meeting. Next, the developers of the Springdale subdivision were given an approval by the Wake County Planning Department for a plan that landlocked both parcels in violation of the regulations set forth by the state. The opposition HOA succeeded in downzoning my property from R4 to R2 by violating the required notification to me, the owner. These illegal actions devalued my property. In so doing, the developers secured for themselves six and a half acres of land that could not be fully developed, which has led to a culture of opposition by the community to save the woods. For 40 years, my property has been used as a free park amenity for the Springdale subdivision, and I'm the taxpaying owner. The allocations I have made are true and are documented. R10 for my property with conditions is consistent with future land use plan and comprehensive plan. I have certification and recommendations from the Planning Commission who fully deliberated on my case with unbiased and non-political consideration. The commission, under pressure from overwhelming opposition, unanimously voted yes in my favor for obvious reason. To date, I have not heard of valid justification from any member of council or opposition to deny my rezoning request. I commend the Planning Department of Raleigh that has adhered to the codes and regulations in making their recommendations. In doing so, the department is doing the city a great service that would keep our great city status intact. It is my hope that this council will represent a change in our local government of the past by making fact-based decisions rather than bias and favoritism so that I would receive the only solution to develop my property, a unanimous approval for R10.
Dr. McLean, thank you, your time is up. In fact, I think we went over the time allotment, which means Timothy Now, who was scheduled to speak, cannot because the time went beyond the four minutes we allowed. If the timekeeper could let me know what the allotment was, that could be helpful. Do we have anybody who can? So, yeah, I know four minutes were allotted, but did we go over the time? Did Dr. McLean go over the time, and if so?
Yeah, looks like she went over two minutes and 34 seconds, 36 seconds.
So, I know there's opposition to this. Mr. Now, are you on the phone?
Sorry, I just was able to unmute him.
Okay, Mr. Now, we exceeded the time. We're at six minutes actually now. I am going to give you 30 seconds just to kind of wrap up very quickly what you might want to say in support. And then we will do the same amount of time for those in opposition.
Mayor, Mr. Now is someone who I could not ever hear. I think he can hear us, but I've not been able to hear him or sound check him.
Okay. All right, well, we know he's on here in support. I am now going to go to the opposition. We have Kirk Stull, who's signed up to speak. Do we have anybody else who's signed up who's opposed to this?
Yes, Mayor, we have another, Gemma Grinstaff. And I can try to get Timothy Now on the line if you'd like to continue his two minutes.
He was in favor.
Correct, he's willing, I can get his phone number and call him.
Since we already did the six minutes and we know he's in support of this, let's roll over to the opposition, and we'll give them six minutes. Counselor Knight, are you okay with that? This is your district, and you had requested the four minutes. Okay, all right, we're going to move to Kirk Stull and then Jenna.
I'd like to let Gemma go first, if that's okay.
Yep, just give your name and address for the record.
Hello, this is Gemma Grinstaff, this is now Now. Hello?
You're really, okay, that's better, you were breaking up before.
This is Gemma Grinstaff, I live at 9408 Dozeron Court in Springdale Gardens. I have spoken with you guys in the past about the city's future land use map. I think you guys are far more familiar with that than I am. But we continue to view the current rezoning requests to be inconsistent with the character of our neighborhood and in violation of several of those land use regulations. From the beginning, we've argued that Dr. McLean should have the right to develop her property as any landowner expects to be able to do. Up to this point and including tonight, Dr. McLean has presented R10 zoning as her only option for development. We do not believe that to be the case. Now, let me acknowledge that I'm not an engineer or a developer, I am merely a neighbor. However, Dr. McLean's engineer, Mr. Now, whom we were not able to hear from, stated before this council back on February 4th that he had not done the work to properly evaluate the site for single-family homes. He had focused on townhomes at the request of Dr. McLean. And of course, there are no site plans that will allow us side-by-side comparison. We continue to believe that Dr. McLean should build single-family homes at R4 density rather than townhomes. This zoning designation would allow her to develop the property and yet remain consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods. And I am perplexed, truly perplexed, as to why this compromise has not been embraced as a win-win for both parties. Dr. McLean would be empowered to build up to 24 single-family homes where she could honor her family name. And we, the neighbors, would be content to maintain the neighborhood that we love. There really is no need for rancor and resentment. Everyone benefits if the council chooses R4. Thank you, and I yield the rest of my time to Kirk.
Okay, thank you, Jenna. Kirk?
Thank, that Kirk Stull, 8837 Woody Hill Road in Springdale Estates. I sent some graphics out over the weekend because they clearly tell the story much more eloquently than I can here. We think the land use regulations support our case that townhouses don't fit here. And the regulation, the property and the development should fit the regulation, not the other way around. And that's what's happening here, is we're trying to force-fit and a sideways interpretation of the regulations to fit an awkward piece of property. Now, from the beginning, the opposition has asked for engineering to support the applicant's claims that dense urban townhouse development is the only way the property that can be developed. We've been told you can't require that. But a major decision is getting ready to be made by the council that's based on the engineering. The developable, the developability issue is fundamental to the applicant's case. So how can we make a decision like this without the information? Now, there was a sketch prepared by Now, and it's just a sketch. And any evaluation of creek impacts and how the roads can lay out is pretty much just a seat-of-the-pants opinion. There's nothing scientific, there's no engineering. Any development that tries to cross the creek will have floodplain and wetland impacts. There are actually options that would completely avoid impacts to the creek, but they haven't been explored because they don't support the townhouse development. So, but what's really baffling is the volume of public input that's going on. Literally hundreds of people have weighed in on this over the past year using every forum available to us. And it just seems like we're not being heard. 200 people at a CAC meeting, and it just seems like our input is not being heard. And yet, all we're asking for is to apply the land use regulations as they're written. So if this should pass on the future land use map, there's going to be two little slivers of medium-density residential, the dark yellow, surrounded by a large area of R2, R4, and R1. And for generations to come, people are going to look at that and wonder, what were they thinking? Now, let me respond to a couple things Dr. McLean said. An HOA can't initiate a rezoning. There is no way the Springdale Estates HOA initiated the rezoning of her property back to R2. Now, we don't know what went on at Wake County 40 years ago when Springdale Estates was developed. None of us know what went on then, or between the developers and the property owners at the time. We can only go with what we know now. So just to summarize, the city's relying on incomplete and questionable information to make a major decision that will have enormous impact on the surrounding properties, 10 existing homes and 20 planned homes in Pine Hollow Estates. The land use regulations support our case just as strongly as any other case that could be made. And we feel like our voice should be heard and given stronger consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Skull, you've just exceeded the time allotted. Just to confirm, we had six minutes on the clock, correct? Just waiting to confirm that.
Yes, Mayor, you did have six minutes on the clock.
All right, thank you, so I'm going to have to end the public comment. Thank you, this has been helpful. And I know this has been going on for a long time. Now, remind me, we allowed additional time because it had been a while since we heard from the applicant and the neighbors. We allowed that time to be held. In essence, we reopen the public hearing, is that correct? And now, do we have to close it?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing for discussion amongst council members. Counselor Knight?
Thank you. Now, I apologize earlier, my computer actually ran out of juice, so apologize when it went black earlier. As most of you realize by now, this is a unique case and a unique piece of property. Unfortunately for the owner-applicant, Dr. McLenn, who's talked about this herself, this piece of property has many constraints to development. It's a heavily wooded sloped area that runs down to a creek with wetlands all around it. And there's a large transmission line that runs, that goes through one side of this piece of property. And there's also a future greenway plan through this creek bottom. And the property is landlocked. This property sits right outside of our city limits, but inside the ETJ and is closest to my district. And so, I want the council and everyone participating in this hearing to know that I've given this case careful consideration because it is in my district and I represent this area, if not a lot of the people and a lot of the neighbors or this piece of property in particular. I've met with Dr. McLenn twice in person and communicated with her often. I've met with the residents and the neighbors in the area who oppose this rezoning as well. And I've heard from no neighbors that support this rezoning. And most of them also live outside of city limits, but they need to be heard and have an opportunity to be heard because of the proximity of their homes to the site and the significant change in zoning that is being requested here and the effect on part of the community. I feel like I've done my due diligence in this case to ensure that I'm looking at it fairly and from everyone's point of view. I've learned a lot about this case, this is not, this is not just right before you. But I hope that we all keep our focus on the facts of this rezoning case as we move through, understanding it better. I've been out to the site, I've seen the piece of property, I've walked around it, and have a very good feel for it and what could be done on it. The site in question has been talked about, is surrounded by R2 and R4 zoning, and we're being asked to approve an R10 with conditions, resulting in townhouses that must be accessed by driving through a completely different neighborhood. In my conversations with the owner-applicant, I learned that she is seeking the R10 because she says she got some advice from city council, or I'm sorry, city staff, that it would be difficult to develop the site with single-family homes and that it would most likely only be possible to develop this site with townhomes. The issue in question, as I understand it, is how difficult it would be to get a standard city street, the type of street, that would typically be required for residential development in what I'd call the pinch point of the parcel of the site, a very narrow point where the two parcels that Dr. McLenn owns to make this, to make this development work. As I told the applicant, I don't think this piece of property lends itself to the high level of density she is asking for. I support higher density than the current zoning as well, to an R4, but not to the extent that she desires. The property is surrounded, as you know, by R4 on one side and R2 on the other. And R4 rezoning would fit in with the surrounding neighbors in the area. And as she mentioned, she originally was trying to get that until she, it sounds like she heard this information. So I'd like to have more of a conversation around that. I believe there is transportation staff available to talk about this because I have not heard from anybody that she could not do an R4 development. And so, again, we unfortunately do not have a full site plan before us. I think that is unfortunate. And there is a process, though, of design adjustment to possibly show and allow the Dr. McLenn that she could do an R4 development. So I'd like to hear, is this Jason Myers? Thanks, Jason.
Jason, you're muted.
You're muted.
The virtual podium is muted.
It's not muted. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay, sorry, the screen went blank, so I cannot see you at the moment. I think it is clear that a city standard street cannot be built between those pieces of property through that pinch point, as Councilmember Knight stated. There is a process through which a substandard street might be able to be approved through a design adjustment, which the text change TC 1719, which is being heard by Planning Commission right now, might be modifying. Right now, those are decided by the Board of Adjustments. In the future, if that text change is passed, it would be Planning Commission, or I've heard that there's some consideration of the Appearance Commission making those decisions. And that is one possible way to be able to get a street that would be potentially narrower, may go in steeper or sharper curves than city standards. But it's about 54 feet in that pinch point, and our standard right-of-way width is about 55 feet for a neighborhood yield street. And I think that's the issue that's been, that's been up. And I think that maybe part of the confusion and part of the challenge that the applicant has experienced, there's been some changes to the text and some changes to the processes to get variances to those things in the last year or so, and that may have generated some extra uncertainty that made this more challenging. Does that answer the question?
Yes, Jason, I appreciate that. That helps. And it does, I think, elucidate that there is a way forward to do an R4, which, again, the applicant has said that that's something that she was originally going for and I believe was still would accept, but we have to ask her. But also, obviously, would better fit in with the surrounding neighborhood in all ways and also be acceptable to all the neighbors around her. Thank you.
Councilor, I have a question for staff on this. So in order to do an R4 and build the street required, we would have to approve it, and then she would have to go to BOA or Planning Commission in order to get the street needed for something that we're approving? Is that, am I understanding it correctly?
Yes. The only way that, well, it could be rezoned to, I think, anything without that. But the only way that the design adjustment can be considered by the Board of Adjustments is if a site plan is submitted and reviewed. And that, I think, even with TC 1719 and in its current form, would still be the case. It would just be a different body hearing that case.
So if this were to be approved as is, would that still be a requirement?
If it were to be approved as an R10 district, there would be the ability to build townhouse, the townhouse building type without those lots fronting on a public street. And there may be need for variances and design adjustments, depending on what that site plan was. But the, just the base subdivision of the land would be allowed without building a public street in that area.
Okay.
And Jason, this would allow whoever wants to develop it to go through that process, not necessarily the current owner, right? It would be up to the developer, whoever's going to develop the property, to go through that at the time that it would move forward, correct?
Correct, whoever submitted an application for subdivision could follow that process, even without owning it.
Councilor Cox?
Yes, could this be zoned to R10 but conditioned to four units per acre?
My colleague Bynum is telling me yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Martin?
Thank you to Councilor Knight for leading on this. I know that this has been difficult for both the neighbors and the applicant and to staff for helping us get through this. You know, I just want to speak to Dr. McLenn and thank you for not giving up. I know that this has been challenging for you and for your family, and I know that you're trying to do what's best for you in this moment. And I want to speak to the history of kind of racial discrimination and zoning that has put you in this position and that has placed your lot in a specific spot where you're needing all of these special approvals to get into a wetland, basically, to build anything of value. And that is not something that is seen often, and that is because of systemic and institutional racism that we see it. And you talked about that in your intro. And so, to the individual that talked about having a win-win, a win-win is going back in time and undoing the systems of racism, which we can't do. The best that we can do here tonight is approve the applicant's, the applicant's request to make sure that she has the ability to build what is most valuable for her land, which was not only approved unanimously by our Planning Commission, but is also, it is consistent with the 2030 Comprehensive Plan and our future land use map. And so, with that, I make a motion to approve. I am going to get myself in trouble here. I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated May 5, 2020, contingent the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment.
Second.
Okay. This has been probably one of the most difficult zoning cases that I've come across during my previous 10 years on council, as well as now. I'm still struggling, but we do have a vote, a motion in a second. And I am probably leaning, well, Councilor Knight, you're raising your hand.
Yeah, it's still on the floor. I would like to ask one more question of Jason, if possible, before, if you don't mind. Thank you. Jason, does this allow discretion by staff if we were to move forward, if this property moved forward for an R4 zoning to allow design adjustment? I mean, I think you said there's a foot difference between that, the 55-foot and the 54-foot. Could that be somewhere that we could, we could walk to adjust that?
I'd have to defer to the city attorney about what staff has the discretion to do. I don't do site plan reviews, so I'm not as up on that. But there is more than just that pinch point width. That's one aspect of it. Horizontal curvature is another aspect of it. And potentially, the grade and the slopes of kind of coming around the pinch point and coming next to the creek would be another point where a design adjustment or a design alternative, if it's changed, would be needed. So it's not just that one width, there are other aspects of the engineering design that would probably need, need some consideration, too.
But in general, there is design adjustment allowed during this process?
Yes, and that's through the Board of Adjustments now.
Or the staff, it just depends on where, what kind of, what kind of adjustment you're looking for. Some are objective, that the staff can grant, other ones require a hearing. It just depends on each particular one. As Jason said, we have one text amendment that's dealing with that now, that's been in the Planning Commission for quite a while.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, Madam Mayor.
Yes, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your hands. That's Branch Stewart Melton, Baldwin, Martin. Did the clerk get that? Opposed? Cox, Buffkin, and Knight. So the motion passes 5-3. David, I want to, David Knight, I want to give you a lot of credit for the hard work that you put into this. And I know this was an easy decision for any of us. I think one of the first times I talked to you after the election, you were actually out on this site, walking it and meeting with people and learning about it. And I think you bring up some very good points. And I just want to tell you thank you because I know this was really difficult.
Sure, it was, it was difficult and still is. And obviously, there are personalities and lives involved in all this, and it's very important. And so, I try to do my best to take all of that into consideration. And I hope as we move forward with this, whatever is developed there, that they do work with the neighbors and everyone around there to make this the best for all of that, all of the people that live around there for the quality of life. So, yeah, appreciate that.
I agree. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Our next item is Z2919, North Rogers Lane. Bynum, you're going to review this for us. I will tell you, we have a representative for the applicant speaking in support, and we have approximately 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 people who have signed up opposed. Each side will get eight minutes. So when those in opposition are speaking, please keep in mind that there's a number of people who have signed up to speak. And try not to use the eight, all eight minutes on your own unless you've been designated by the group to speak on their behalf. Bynum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we move on to Z3919, I actually have a question about Z2319. Does the 5-3 vote require a second vote at a subsequent meeting? That's a question for the city attorney.
Only if it was the first time that it was presented. So I think we're, this has been in front of council, I think, enough times that the purpose is to make sure that there's no, you don't introduce something the first time. So we're good on that.
Thank you, I just needed to know if I needed to put it back into board ducks.
No, that's a good.
Moving on to Z3919 on North Rogers Lane. This is a request to rezone a piece of property to the manufactured housing district. It's currently in the Rogers Farm Plan Development District, and so they're moving into the manufactured housing district with conditions, just under 11 acres. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, but the Planning Commission and the Southeast CAC, which did have an opportunity to hear this, both recommend denial of the request. So you can see the property here is south of the Edgewater Place Shopping Center and south of New Bern Avenue, and also south of the existing Kingsborough Estates Manufactured Housing Park. And then the Kellum Wyatt Farm, which is owned by Wake County, is located south of the property in question, and we have heard a lot from neighbors in Summer Place and Waterford Landing about the case. There are two conditions proposed here. One is that no manufactured housing would be located in the area closest to Rogers Lane. And then also, that there would be tree protection established in the low-lying area of the property, highlighted in blue. I don't know if you can see this well. So the tree, the prohibition on manufactured housing is in this area, and the tree protection requirements are in this area. So the change here would actually reduce the entitlement here significantly, so reduce the maximum residential units down to 33, so expanding the existing manufactured housing park, which is about 300 units, by an additional 33 units. Reduces the potential maximum square footage significantly and also removes all retail and office entitlement. Again, this is consistent with the plan. What questions can I answer for you about this request?
Does anybody have any questions?
I think we should definitely have a hearing, open a hearing.
Okay, I'm going to open the hearing. Our first speaker is Michael Birch, oh, is that, Michael Birch? Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor Baldwin, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, good evening, this is Michael Birch, standing in for my colleague, Worth Mills. Appreciate Bynum giving the staff report and just want to emphasize a few things. This is a significant downzoning of the property to allow for 33 manufactured housing units that are well buffered from nearby neighborhoods, over 1,000 feet from the closest home and well-screened by existing vegetation and would provide some additional affordable housing options in the area within walking distance to retail, while preserving some of the environmental features on the site. site. Consistent with the future land use map, consistent with the comp plan and compatible, uh, with the surrounding area. Um, we understand, uh, you know, that there is a lot of opposition from the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, and we've tried to find a way to, uh, address those concerns that have been raised. Um, and appreciate the time that, uh, we've been given to try and find and work toward a solution. Uh, would appreciate the opportunity to continue doing that. Uh, and hopefully you also saw some of the emails, uh, in support in your packet from residents of the existing mobile home park. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to address, uh, the council and hear for any questions. Thanks.
Does any council member have question of Michael? Okay, if we could set the timer and reserve that, I think it was like six minutes and 38 seconds, um, in case, um, Mr. Birch needs to come back and address any additional concerns. We could set the timer to eight minutes and we will start hearing from, um, the opposition. Um, Beth, how many people do we have on the line who would wish to speak on this matter?
Hi, I couldn't unmute myself. We have, um, all but three people. Um, John Willis is not on. I don't believe Patrick Spate is on, and Georgia Malik is not on, but her husband, David, I believe is. Everybody else should be on the line, so.
So it was John Willis, Georgia Malik, and who was the third person?
Um, Patrick Spate.
Okay.
They're the only three that we do not.
Okay. Well, I, um, am going to start with Aurelia Macklin. And please keep in mind, again, eight minutes total. Um, I would suggest being brief with your comments so we can hear from everybody.
Okay. Um, this is Aurelia Macklin. I live at 5308 Peasness Drive, right off of Rogers Lane. What I would love to do is if we have our HOA, um, President Eric Battle, if he's on the line, I'd like for him to start first anytime left. Um, I would like to go on the end if that's possible, to ensure that we get the opportunity for him to give, um, any comments and presentation.
Okay, um, I will ask Eric to, um, join in the call then. Eric Battle, if you could.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, Eric Battle, 5100 Heather Ridge Lane. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, City Manager, Council, City Staff. Um, this has been a journey for the community. We vehemently oppose Z3919. Um, at a, um, CAC meeting, uh, we showed up, uh, 74 to 2 against, um, this, uh, expansion. Um, at the various, um, planning commission meetings, uh, we were able to illustrate the developer's true intentions. Um, this is about an additional 33 lots, an additional $30,000 a year. Uh, if it was truly about, uh, providing affordable housing, um, the existing neighborhood conditions would not have been so deplorable. Um, we were easily able to point out the lack of maintenance of the roadways, um, the lack of protection of the stream that runs through the property, um, in any effort whatsoever, um, to make this a desirable place to live, uh, and visit. Uh, the potholes, state erosion violations, uh, we found paint cans, debris, broken toilets, all adjacent to the water's edge, which are upstream from four community lakes, uh, that all our families enjoy and fish in. Um, we already have existing affordable housing within our community. Um, that existing mobile home park is part of our community, and it has over 300 existing homes already. Uh, we also have Habitat for Humanity, single family homes within our community. And there's already an approved, uh, Sussex Apartments, um, that will provide over 200, uh, income based units, uh, 1, 2, 3 bedroom units. And they, they plan to start, uh, 2021 with construction. Um, so basically, we are bookend by affordable housing. Um, that makes us a great melting pot. Um, and we're proud of that. Um, but recently, there have actually been three shootings, one of fatality within this mobile home park. Um, there, there is a, a issue and a grave concern with crime. We brought this up to the developer. Um, and you know, they continue to push until they get the answer that they want. Um, you know, they're painting a clear picture. Uh, we basically feel like, uh, you can imagine Charlie Brown. And when Lucy continues to move the football, and then we feel like that's what the developer is doing. They're continuing to move the football until they get the answer that they want from city council or the planning commission. Um, the great thing about it is the planning commission heard our concerns. They went out, they actually did cite visits, uh, and they came back with a vote, uh, a great vote of seven to zero against this proposal, uh, which was great. Um, you know, we feel like as a community, we've done everything that the city council could ask for, everything the planning commission could ask for. Uh, we model ourselves after the downtown Raleigh Alliance and some of the other great neighborhoods, um, that you guys hear from all the time. Um, we've become engaged, we've become organized, uh, we've hosted formal meetings, we've hosted meetings with this applicant. Um, we've spoke at five planning commission meetings and had representation there. We even met with our councilman, Mayor Proten Branch, um, about our concerns. Um, you know, so we're asking, what more can we do? You know, we're asking that city council join the planning commission, join the community, and deny this rezoning request. Uh, we actually also deny that you, uh, we also actually request that you deny their request for an extension, um, under the guise of, hey, we're going to create covenants for our neighborhood to make it a better place. Um, the community agrees the mobile home park should have covenants, but it should not be tied to Z3919. Uh, and it shouldn't be dangled out as a carrot of, hey, this is what we're going to do because we want this rezoning approved. Um, we welcome the Sussex Apartments. We welcome Raleigh Beach Apartments under construction, Magnolia Trace Apartment, uh, townhomes, excuse me, that are under construction, uh, future Z2419, which is a large mixed use development. We welcome that. We are all for development. We're all for growth. All those developments I mentioned are within a mile of our community. Um, so again, we ask that you guys support the community and, um, vote against Z3919. It's not an asset to us. It's not an asset to the city as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Battle. Next, I have Lindsay Peterson. Please keep in mind, we have less than three minutes left.
Hey, guys. My name is Lindsay Peterson. My address is 820 Penn Cross Drive. I'm going to actually give my time back to the, um, group to speak on my behalf and the behalf of the community.
Okay, thank you. Paula Holly. Is Paula Holly still on the line?
Yes, hello?
Hi, ma'am.
Yes. I am Paula Holly. My husband and I reside at 700 White Daisies Court, uh, in the Waterford Landing subdivision. And we oppose, um, this situation. And I also would yield my time to another speaker. Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll ask Jewel Scott to get on the line.
Hi, this is Jewel Scott. I live at 5812 Waterford Landing Court, um, in Raleigh. I also just want to, to this, and I wholeheartedly support all that Mr. Battle has said and Ms. Macklin, and appreciate the work of the CAC. We have, um, I think this community, um, we are doing our part as far as supporting affordable housing. Um, but I think we also need to recognize the limits, um, the violent crimes, the pedestrian traffic. That New Bern Avenue corridor is very concerning, um, for risk of near misses or pedestrian deaths. There's a lot of foot traffic. Um, good safety considerations, sidewalk planning, the things that we need to do to make sure that we don't just provide affordable housing, but housing in safe communities, uh, for everyone. I yield back the rest of my time.
Thank you. David Malik.
Yeah, yes, Mayor. This is David Malik. Address is 5441 Thunder Ridge Drive. Um, I also, uh, resonate with everybody that has spoken previously. I vehemently oppose as well. Um, with that in mind, I'll go ahead and, and defer. Um, I believe Aurelia, Aurelia Macklin also wanted to speak, uh, following Eric Battle, but I may be speaking out of turn. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, um, we have Teresa. And I have Teresa, Teresa here twice. And I know that's not correct. Is there Teresa on the line?
Yes, there is. This is Teresa Robinson. I live at 837 Penn Cross Drive in Waterford Landing subdivision. And I just want to piggyback off of Eric Battle and say I wholeheartedly agree. That is the consensus of us as a community. And I vote in opposition to, um, the proposal for rezoning. And I give up my time for someone else.
Okay, we have Lee Dunn.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Lee Dunn. I live at 628 Penn Cross Drive. I've lived here in this neighborhood, um, Village Lake subdivision, right off Rogers Lane for 25 years. I'm in agreement with everything that has been already, um, presented by Mr. Battle. And, uh, therefore, I'd like to defer any additional time to any remaining speakers.
Okay, and, um, last is, um, Shadana Seiler. Is Ms. Seiler there?
Yes, I live at 900 Penn Cross Drive. I oppose the rezoning and I yield my time back to the, um, community.
All right, Aurelia Macklin, you want to hop on?
Sure.
We're almost out of time here, but.
Well, just real quick, I agree with, um, what Eric Battle has said. I wanted the group to know there's about 64 of us actively involved in a Facebook page about our community and all the surrounding and what's going on, particularly this, um, rezoning. Um, I also wanted to comment on the initial, um, opening statement about the visibility of the park. And I want you to know during the fall and winter months, you may, you can see this park clearly from the street. There's a lot of foot traffic that goes on back and forth as they come across the property lines there to get to the, um, grocery stores. So they're actually cutting across the community lines. And we, and, you know, it's important that, you know, we put a lot of, um, effort, concerns, and, um, we're really looking for the council to hear us out and, and to know that we support affordable housing. But we, um, we want your support. And, um, and we're hoping that you will hear our concerns and allow us to, to continue to support affordable housing, but not this. This is the wrong project.
Okay, thank you very much, um, everybody for your time. Um, Michael, um, I am going to give the podium back to you. There was about six minutes and 38 seconds left. I don't know, there's any additional comments you would like to make.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Um, just wanted to touch on a few, um, comments. One, um, just on behalf of the owner, I think they would, um, strenuously disagree with the, the status of the existing, uh, park to the north, um, and the maintenance of that park, uh, and would tell you that it is, um, they have done a significant amount of work, uh, since they've owned it over the last 10 years, uh, and continue to have a routine maintenance schedule. Um, I will acknowledge that a lot of the comments that we have been working with, um, do pertain to property that is not within the scope of this rezoning request. And so it's not like we can address those concerns through, uh, zoning conditions. And so, yes, we have been trying to, um, develop a private covenant that would apply to property not subject to this rezoning that would actually address, um, the comments that we, um, had been receiving. And so, um, that's why we were taking that route. And that's what's added to the, um, some complication to this, um, to this rezoning. But, um, again, appreciate those comments, and we're trying to address those. And, um, answer any questions the council have.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from council?
I, I have some, but I'll let other counselors, I'd rather go last.
There's no other questions coming. So Cory, why don't you, um?
Have you closed the hearing?
Um, I will, if that's your wish. I will close the hearing.
All right. Um, I definitely want to thank the applicant for their work, um, on this project. There is a need for housing. Um, one thing about the Rogers Lane community is they have diverse housing, um, throughout. Um, they, you know, if you drive through it and, and you see the diversity of the community, um, it's there. Um, and this, one thing I always believe is important is timing. And timing is everything. And I believe the applicant is working currently on a covenant, and I think they can continue to do that work. I, I pray that they continue to do that, that work. But as for me at this time, I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated May 5th, 2020, contained in the agenda material, and to deny the zoning amendment.
Do we have a second? Counselor Martin? Okay. Um, all in favor? Raise your hands. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And then we have the last rezoning case of the evening, Z120 to 634 Oberlin Road.
This is a request to rezone six and a half acres from R10 to RX7 with conditions. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The Five Point CAC offered a split vote, and the Hillsborough Wade CAC recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends approval by a split vote. Uh, and so, uh, this is the site in question. It's, uh, south of Daniel's Middle School, just north of the Fairview Road and Oberlin Road intersection. A couple of views of the site. This is currently a portion of Country Club Homes. So there's some conditions here. Uh, height is limited to no more than, uh, five stories. And, uh, within 60 feet of Oberlin Road, height is limited to three stories, except for the portion along Oberlin that is also within 275 feet of the school, where height is limited to four stories. They have prohibited, uh, as primary use or principal use, office, restaurant, retail, personal service, overnight lodging, and outdoor recreation. And the density for household living, anything other than, uh, group living, is limited to 10 units per acre. Uh, they're basically setting up a situation where, um, they have entitlement for, uh, continuing care, community, or retirement community, rest home or assisted living, um, or single family uses. So the change here is that the residential density increases significantly, uh, for, um, single family use or congregate care use. The setbacks, um, are not changing significantly, uh, but they're upping the congregate care entitlement here. Uh, what kind of questions can I answer for you about this, uh, request?
Um, Bynum, could you reduce that? Yes, thank you. Um, any members of council have a question for, um, staff? Counselor Cox?
Uh, yes. Uh, could you explain again the, uh, the density? Um, I had a conversation with Michael Birch, and my understanding was that essentially the, the density doesn't really change. It would be R10, be 10 units per acre under the proposed zoning, and it's currently 10 units per acre. So I didn't, and I read through the language. I didn't really see anything in there for a condition that would allow greater density for 424 congregate care units.
Right, so the residential density for a single family is held steady, and that's about 64 units. Um, but the congregate care, because they're not limiting, if you go back one more to the conditions, the density for household living uses, other than group living uses, is limited to the 10 units per acre. So they're, they're leaving room that the group living uses can make use of the height for additional, uh, density.
Okay. And could you go back to the map showing the, the property? So it looks like the, the property is, is kind of split. There's like a little parking area there. So, um, what would the height be, uh, along those, um, existing homes to the south? So what would the height be along those existing homes to the south?
So this is just a portion of Country Club Homes that's proposed to be rezoned.
Right.
So they can't see my drawing. So the Country Club Homes backs up to properties that front on, single-family properties that front on St. Mary's Street. This is, would put new development adjacent to existing Country Club Homes development. And then the limits on height are along the boundary with the school on the north side of the property and along, let me go back to the conditions, please, I believe, also along Oberlin Road. Right. So.
Okay, but nothing.
Limited within 60 feet of Oberlin Road and limited adjacent to the school.
But no limitations on the south side, is that correct?
No limitations on the south or the east side, that's correct.
Okay. And it can currently support congregate care as well, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
The current zoning supports some amount of congregate care as well, is that correct?
The current zoning is R10, so allows 10 single-family units per acre or 10 apartments per acre.
Okay, but you have 129 congregate care. So that would be the maximum units. You can have up to 129 units of congregate care under existing zoning, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Remember, R10 limits them to three stories and 40 feet in height. So R7 represents a, since they're not limiting the density by number of units in the new, it's RX7, in the residential mixed-use district, they'd have greater congregate care entitlement.
Now, is there an actual zoning condition? I didn't see one that specifies that this will be developed as congregate care.
No, sir. They're not requiring themselves to develop that way. They're leaving the door open that they could redevelop basically under the R10 that's currently in place, single-family or, I believe, apartment or townhouse or an attached house type.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we have any additional questions of staff? Okay, we will now hear from Michael Birch. Yeah, okay. And again, eight minutes per side. We have one person who signed up to speak, who is opposed.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Again, Michael Birch with Longleaf Law Partners. And I don't know if it's possible, Bynum, if you're working the presentation, actually just to go to slide 36 on your slide, just that aerial that was up previously, I'll just speak from that in the city's presentation. So let me just say at the beginning, the purpose of this rezoning is to allow for a continuing care retirement community on a portion of the Country Club Homes site, about a five and a half acres, six-acre portion of the overall 24 acres. Continuing care retirement community would have a mix of independent living units, memory care, assisted living, skilled nursing units. And I'll touch on some of Counselor Cox's questions towards the end. Just want to highlight the requests, consistency with the future land use map, urban form map, all the relevant comp plan policies, including those concerning building height and density, location of density, and compatible with the surrounding area. Want to highlight a few public benefits as well. This rezoning would provide a needed housing type and services to this area. There are really no comparable facilities within two miles and really only one or two comparable facilities within about a seven-mile radius. The CCRC use is a low-traffic generator, particularly in the peak hours, in the morning and the afternoon. And when compared to kind of what it's replacing on the property, noted in the staff report, it really results in only one additional car for every two and a half minutes in the peak hours. And as a result of redeveloping the site, this will actually be required to add additional pavement on Oberlin Road, which will allow restriping for a center turn lane along this portion of Oberlin Road where it currently doesn't exist, which increases the capacity of Oberlin Road. Rezoning, locate kind of appropriately scaled density along the corridor. Oberlin Road is pro brand for higher frequency bus transit. There's also frequent bus transit along Glenwood Avenue within walking distance. And this area is walkable to goods, services, restaurants. It maintains a three-story height limit along Oberlin Road, transitioning to four stories as it goes downhill towards Daniel's, with a maximum of five stories for the balance of that rezoning site that you're looking at. I'll just note that the five-story portion of the property is over 700 feet from the closest house on St. Mary's Street there to the east, and over 300 feet from the closest home along Oberlin Road, of course, with the intervening buildings kind of blocking the view of the five-story portion. I do want to note, just acknowledge that we spent a significant amount of time, almost a year before even filing this case, to try and see if we could get the project to work within a four-story scenario, understanding that height might be a concern. We did kind of the best we could, and knowing that we wanted to maintain height along Oberlin Road at three stories to stay in character. But it does require a portion of the site being five stories. To say we engaged the public, we had a well-attended neighborhood meeting with over 70 folks, three presentations to the Five Points CAC, courtesy presentation to the Hillsborough Wade CAC. Just to kind of clarify some of the comments or questions that Counselor Cox was asking about the conditions. Essentially, we are saying that this property will remain R10, except for if it's developed as a congregate care retirement community, in which case it doesn't have that 10-unit-per-acre density cap. We tried to kind of very narrowly tailor the request to kind of allow that CCRC use. Our whole team is here in case there are any questions that the council has. Appreciate your consideration of this request. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, I'm going to call on Claire Bonifant, who signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your patience tonight.
No worries. I never mind saving the last for, the best for last, I guess. My name is Claire Bonifant. We live at 2214 St. Mary's Street. We're 21-year residents in our home. And we will be viewing the backside of the proposed development pretty much straight across the street from our house. Spent a lot of time in the last month talking with neighbors. There've been a couple of petitions up on change.org regarding this rezoning. And I just wanted to summarize the primary concern that's been voiced by the two sets of folks who signed the two petitions, about 150 signatories for each. I'm sure there's some overlap. We welcome the development and see a big benefit to a senior living community in this neighborhood. I don't think anybody wants to see Raleigh stall in its progress forward. But the consistent theme among all the folks that we've heard from is a desire for the project to remain within the current height restrictions that exist already. If you look at Oberlin Road from Glenwood all the way to Wade Avenue, every house, apartment, and commercial property follows that three-story current height restriction. And if you rezone this area to allow the five-story structure, it will alter the visual character and the feel of the surrounding neighborhoods. I realize there's a lot of good setback, and there's been a lot of planning that's gone into it, but I think that is the primary concern. And people are concerned for, you know, any effect on property values for the creation of that canyon effect, similar to what's happening at Cameron Village, with neighborhoods being walled off by five-story apartments. And we see lots of attractive developments, even the Kenan Pool development directly across the street from this property, which is a series of three-story, two- and three-story homes and townhouses, as well as the three-story condos at Glover Lane next to Preservation N.C. offices. So, you know, a lot of people are just wondering why there can't be a solution that respects the existing aesthetic in this, you know, neighborhood that's over a century old. So that's all I had to impart.
Okay, thank you very much. Michael, anything you would like to add? Michael Birch?
Yep, no ma'am, nothing to add.
Okay. All right, I am going to close the hearing then. And any comments from council? Counselor Knight?
I'll try again. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for all the interested parties in this, in this, in this case. I've tried to do my due diligence in this case as well. There is not the level, if you will, of organized opposition as you would find as you found in other cases. That doesn't mean it's not important, what the folks are saying and what the folks who oppose this or have concerns. It's mostly stated in the, in the, in the way of being concerned. And I think there is the, is it out of character? And also specifically about the potential for a five-story aspect to this, to this development. And as Mr. Birch has said, that will be not on the road, and it will truly be, in my opinion, pretty far from any residential, any homes, I guess you'd say. I am comfortable with this. I know Liberty Homes is a, they're a senior living developer that have done great work in other places. I think it'll be a top-notch development. It is higher density, little if any traffic impact. And also, obviously, it brings senior living to an area that, as Mr. Birch said, does not have it. And they have worked as much as possible to mitigate issues, stormwater and others. And I think they've done a good job on that. I certainly take serious the issues with, you know, this, it is surrounded in part by very old neighborhoods. But as you see from the map, there is a lot of mixed use nearby. And I believe at the, at the bottom of Oberlin, where it is, is the five, five stories, I believe, is the condominium complex down there. There are other three-story buildings on Oberlin. And there's only going to, this is only going to go to three stories on Oberlin. So the larger piece of property that you can see there is, it was built in 1940, I believe. Now, think about that. That's 80 years ago. Now, it's going to be redeveloped. And the fact it hasn't been already is pretty unbelievable. I would not call it a high-density, what is there now. And it's certainly not built to the level that this will be built to. And so it is going to be redeveloped. We all know that that larger parcel is going to be redeveloped. And I think for this quadrant of it, it is a, a development that I believe does fit in with that area and the future of that area. I think it works. So I support this, this rezoning, and when the time is right, I'll ask for a motion.
Does anybody else have any comments? Counselor Cox?
Yes, one concern I have about this proposal is that it is going to eliminate a sizable amount of affordable housing. I mean, these units are 500 to about 800 square feet in size. And so one of the things I'm concerned about is that we're going to replace these affordable units with probably $3,000 to $5,000 a month apartments. And I don't see any provisions in this rezoning request to provide any affordable housing. It's just a comment.
Could, can I, can Mr. Birch speak to that? I mean, they're, they're obviously have thought about the redevelopment in terms of how that will change that. Does, can he speak to that, or is that, once it's closed, he can't speak to it?
Michael?
Hi, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So yes, we acknowledge that we are removing some affordable housing units. I will say, on a per-square-foot basis, you know, they're comparable to Oberlin Corp., but obviously they are smaller units. But I will note, as Counselor Knight noted, that they are 80-year-old units. And so they are, they certainly don't have amenities that folks are looking for these days, washer, dryer, other things like that. I do want to note, and this is something that we noted at CAC meetings, Planning Commission meeting, is that the property owner, the current property owner, will hold a housing fair for all the residents living in this portion of the property to help them find a place nearby with comparable rent. That property owner has done this recently before with the Palms Apartments off of Lake Boone Trail and handled it very successfully there and was able to place residents. And so that will occur here as well.
Thank you. So I appreciate Claire, and I've met with her and some others through a Zoom meeting recently, and I appreciate their concerns. And I believe that the conversation will continue. I think Michael has said that, and the developers are open to that conversation continuing. But I do think this is a positive project for that area, and I support it moving forward.
Counselor Martin, you had your hand raised?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to comment on a few quick things. I think one of the main amenities folks are looking for right now, especially in today's economy, is just a roof over their head. So I don't think that that's a valid argument in this case to the issue that Mr. Cox raised. I think that losing affordable housing is an issue, but it's also something that we're looking at in the upcoming bond that we've been discussing as a council and something that we're trying to mitigate. I do support this case moving forward. With that said, I do think that, you know, we're increasing density along the corridor that desperately needs it. And there are a number of amenities that this project is including, including walkability and bike infrastructure that I'm really excited about, and starts to extend the sort of walking experience from the Five Points area as well. And so I'm excited about what that starts to do for other parts of my district and what this starts to do for areas that are adjacent to Counselor Knight's district as well. So overall, I'm supportive, but share obviously the concerns of Counselor Cox, even though there's, you know, not, not anything we can do about that right this second. It is something that obviously I'm thinking about as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I think Counselor Knight, you indicated you wanted to make a motion.
Thank you, yes. Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated May 5, 2020, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment.
Do we have a second? Counselor Martin seconds that? Okay, all in favor? Raise your hands. Is anyone opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. I want to thank everybody for their patience tonight. It was a little slow getting going, but I also want to thank the staff for doing a great job under a lot of pressure to make this happen. And Beth Stagner in particular, staying totally composed and making sure that it all came together. So thank you, everybody, once again, for, what is this, our third virtual meeting? And, you know, it's, it's, at least for now, the way we're going to have to do business. But I just want to thank everybody for... But I just want to thank everybody for showing up, watching, and participating, and also all of you for being engaged, concerned, as we go through this new process. So thank you very much, and have a wonderful night.
Thank you, bye.
Bye, thank you.
Good night, stay safe.